Welcome, everybody, this morning to the virtual meeting of the Board of County Commissioners for Tuesday, April 28. I'd like to start the meeting this morning by asking Commissioner Bill Pickens to give our invocation and the pledge of allegiance by Commissioner Goddard. Commissioner Pickens?
Okay, let us pray. Heavenly Father, we just thank you for this glorious day and all the wonders in it, Father God. We thank you for the opportunity to meet here, Father God, in our new format, Father God, and we thank you for all the help with the IT department to get us hooked together, Father God. Father God, I just want to thank the staff for the information that's presented here and the commissioners will discuss it and deliberate it and make the best decisions for our county. Father God, we ask a special prayer for our nation and our state and our county as we deal with the COVID-19 pandemic. Father God, we just thank all the frontline people, medical staff, EOC people, the frontline people who are keeping our citizens safe. Father God, put a hedge of protection around them and keep them safe, Father God. Guide us in this meeting in Jesus Christ, we pray. Amen.
Amen.
All right, can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Commissioner Pickens, and thank you, Commissioner Goddard. The chair will entertain a motion of the approval of minutes listed on the agenda.
I move for approval.
We have a motion. We have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion or changes? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it, motion carries. Okay, with that, we're going to recess the Board of County Commissioners meeting and open the Port Authority meeting. And the first item on the Port Authority is approval of the minutes listed on the agenda.
Mr. Chairman, I move approval of the minutes listed on the agenda.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any further changes or discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it, motion carries. Do we have any public comment on Port Authority items sent, Ms. Young or Ms. Parsons?
Not for Port Authority.
Okay, thank you. Next is item C, the award of the bid 19-30 jail expansion that was discussed in workshop. Does any commissioners want to discuss that at this point?
Mr. Chairman, I move approval of that item.
Have a motion to approve and a second. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Ayes have it, motion carries. The next, we have general discussion. Is there any general discussion by commissioners on Port Authority items? Hearing none, I will adjourn the Port Authority meeting and reconvene the Board of County Commissioners meeting. Item number four is presentations by Julianne Young on the countywide projects update. Ms. Young?
Good morning, sir. The countywide project list will be updated and on the website at any moment. You'll also get a copy of it in your email box. As we've discussed prior, this is not a comprehensive list of every project or initiative undertaken by our county departments. This is a list comprised of the most concerning or of most of greatest concern to the commission citizens or staff. The updates since our last report, I'm going to run through just the updated ones. The census update as of 4/25, Putnam County has a 42.10% response rate. The state average response rate is 51.1% and the national average is 53.2%. The citizens still have the ability to go online and complete their census surveys. The project place splash pad and playground, the playground construction is complete, sod and landscaping around the area is complete. The restrooms have been repainted. The fencing and the splash pad work is underway currently. The fence should be done today and the estimated completion for the splash pad is by the end of the week, weather permitting. So that product is coming to fruition. Parks and Recreation completed the installation of two additional sand volleyball courts. Parks and Recreation completed the removal of two derelict vessels. They have been removed from the St. John's waterways. The comprehensive plan at the planning department, the background is update is completed. Changes to the goals, objectives and policies are being drafted as well as proposed changes to the future land use map. A number of public workshops were canceled, but we are in the process of trying to reschedule them via electronic media. We're also trying to set meetings with interest groups such as the agricultural interests to focus on their issues and interest as part of the update. The state legislature has adopted the requirements for a new element of all comprehensive plans, property rights elements, and we are reviewing the legislation and requirements for what will be needed to develop this element as part of the overall update. Public Works update on County Road 207A Bridge. The bridge work is expected to be complete, the structural bridge work is expected to be completed by the end of April and the road work will begin immediately following. The project is still on schedule to be completed by or before July 30. Public Works Dirt to Pay Fiscal Year 19. All roads have been completed with the exception of the remaining last three, which is Gaskin, Ballard and Julia. Work is expected to begin on those as soon as possible and the project estimated completion date of all roads is still July 2020. The Main Street construction of the sidewalk in Crescent City. The construction conference was held on 4/13 of 2020 and the notice proceed was issued on April 20. Estimated completion date is still October of 2020. The Barton Bridge, the design process is underway, meeting with the utility companies when it was held on March 21. The Boys Ranch Road Pipe Culvert Replacement Project has been completed. The work is finished. Lake Susan Road Phase Two, the design is underway and construction is scheduled to begin December 2020. The project completion date is estimated to be June of 2022. St. John's Avenue Resurfacing Palm Avenue to the CSX railroad crossing at the fire station. The design proposal was approved at the March 10 BOCC meeting and the notice proceed was issued on the March 24 meeting. The Public Works has the road resurfacing for fiscal year 20, which was awarded in April 14th at the BOCC meeting. We're in the process of getting those contract and construction documents ready. The Public Works Septic to Sewer Conversion, this is Horse Landing and Elsie Drive, the community information meeting which was held previously. We did receive, this is a Water Management District grant. Grant funds are expected to be approximately 1.27 million. This is a competitive grant and we have received notification that our project was scored and ranked 11th out of 45 statewide projects. The official approval is contingent upon approval of the fiscal year 2021 adopted budget by the governing board, which is scheduled to happen in September, but we're hopeful that's coming through. Dirt to pave 2020, the survey work is in progress. As soon as the survey's work is done, we'll be ready to go to bid with that. The County Road 315 Crosswalk, the quotes are being sought to complete the work. And sanitation cell for a construction, the rank order was approved at the April 14, 2020 BOCC meeting and contract negotiations and execution of that contract are pending. That's a list of the updates to that project list. Again, it will be in your email as well as on the website.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Commissioner Harvey?
Thank you. Animal Services, we were going to get a diagram of that building. Has that been received yet?
I can answer that.
Okay.
I can answer that. Hello, is my mic working?
Jeff, I can hear you on the buddy.
Commissioner Turner was muted.
Okay, Commissioner Rawls, go ahead, I'm apologize.
I'm still working on trying to get the floor plan in a small enough form that y'all can read it when we print it out because the building is so long. The biggest we could print on is 18 inch paper. It doesn't, you can't really read the details, so my wife has actually taken the building and cutting it to three pieces to make it easier for you to digest.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner Rawls, for that.
I can show you if you want. A few minutes, I can show you what you're looking at.
Not necessary, Mr.
I can show you a screenshot.
Commissioner Rawls, I think it would be fine if you need them plotted out into a big set of plans where we can actually see them in the two foot, three foot size, that's normal business size or construction size. You can take that, if you have it in electronic format such as a PDF, if you would send it down to the building department, they have a plotter down there that they can print it out at that point and they can just go ahead and fold up a set of them and hand them out to whoever needs them.
Okay.
That would make it easier than having to redesign.
Yep.
I don't see John Ciuffi on here this morning, so Mike, would you please touch base with him, Mr. Brown, and make sure that they know that we're going to have some plans coming?
We do that. Yep.
Okay, if you'll just get them to him, Commissioner Rawls, we'll take her from there.
You have a few minutes.
Thank you. Was that good enough, Commissioner Harvey, for now?
Yes, sir. The sound really got bad during your conversation, so I don't know what happened. Maybe it was out here coming through my bandwidth, but yeah, I'm fine with that and that's a good, that was a good idea. Thank you, Commissioner Rawls. Thank you, Mr. Turner, appreciate it.
Yes, sir, no problem. Thank you, Commissioner Rawls, for putting the extra time and effort into this project. From there, we'll go on to public comment and we have, somebody is not muted and they're feeding back. Is it you? Okay, of course, it was administrator Suggs, of course. Okay, we're going to move into the public comment portion of this and the, we have one sent in email that's going to be read by Laura Parsons from, I think it was Ms. Reyes, and so if you would please read that into the agenda at this time or into the minutes at this time.
Yes, sir, I received one email from Yvette Reyes and she said, hello, where are we with the new animal control building? Is it not a conflict of interest for Jeff Rawls, a contractor, to be the one creating the sketches for the building? Thank you.
Okay, I'll take that question for Commissioner Rawls. This commissioner truly appreciates Commissioner Rawls taking the leadership to try to move this building forward. It's no conflict that I can possibly see for him to do this because he is not going to build the building and he is not going to do whatever. If he had plans on bidding on the building, that would be a different situation, but I could pretty much assure you that he's not. And so, you know, everything he's doing is he's taking his expertise and he's moving that forward at his own expense because it is not part of his job duty. So this commissioner says, I thank him for that and that's where we are. We just discussed it a few minutes ago, moving the project forward as soon as he develops the design criteria. So anyhow, I think that adequately addressed Ms. Reyes. Does any other commissioners like to speak on that subject?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I would.
Okay.
You got me?
Yes, sir, I got you.
Okay, I also want to commend Commissioner Rawls for stepping up, especially with his expertise in the construction business, to attend the animal control meetings, advisory meetings and to assist them in a plan. I'd like to add, though, I had a retired architect from Willaca reach out to me. He has a friend who still does architectural work and has experience in animal control facilities and centers and is willing to work with the county, to come up with the initial plan for a sort of building. So I've mentioned this to Administrator Suggs and I believe we probably need to get the information to Julianne, maybe where he can, she can make a contact with them to see if there's something that this architect can help us free of charge. If that's okay with Commissioner Rawls and the advisory committee.
I think that was an excellent suggestion, but I'm going to leave that up to the purview of Commissioner Rawls. If he wants someone else in it with him, that's fine, or if he feels like he needs it, that's fine.
That would be great. The, I'm fixing to send you over the floor plan itself, but yeah, if they want to help get involved in this, we've still got a lot of technical drawing to do as far as the means and methods of, because right now, the assumption is this is going to be a metal building for the middle portion. I was just handed this, I don't know if you can see this, this is the actual floor plan, but the middle portion of the T is a metal building. The kennel areas would be post and beam with metal roofing and concrete block. So there's still a lot of technical drawing that's got to be done to get it there, but the floor plan's got to be agreed upon before you waste your efforts trying to get any technical drawings done.
Thank you, Commissioner Pickens. Would you please give that, the architect's contact information to Administrator Suggs or to Julie Holmes or Julie Young, excuse me, Julie? The, and maybe one of them could reach out to the architect and try to line up a way that they could meet with Commissioner Rawls and help him develop those technical drawings?
Yeah, we'll do that, do it after the meeting.
All right, thank you, Commissioner. With that being said, we're going to move on to the consent agenda, having no more public comment. The consent agenda is A to G. Is there anyone wishing to pull any items from the consent agenda? Commissioner Pickens?
I have none.
Commissioner Goddard?
I have none.
Commissioner Harvey?
I have none, sir.
Commissioner Rawls?
I have none.
Okay, and I have none.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to move the consent agenda items A, B, C, D, E, F and G approval.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second by Commissioner Goddard. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it, motion carries. We're going to move now into a, well, see, this was my concern, we have a 10 o'clock time certain hearing, so I'm gonna, we're gonna skip the hearing at this point because we have got to wait till 10 and carry on with the agenda and then we'll have the public hearing at 10 o'clock because it was time certain. Move on to item eight, which is comments from the clerk of court, Mr. Smith.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I spoke with Susan Frank earlier today and we have no options to bring before the board.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Smith. The next would be appointments.
Yeah, it won't.
Do we have any appointments, Commissioner Pickens?
I have none.
Commissioner Goddard?
I have none.
Commissioner Harvey?
I have none, sir.
Commissioner Rawls? You're muted, Commissioner Rawls.
I have none.
Okay, thank you. So we'll move on from that and go to county administrators' comments.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, how you doing today?
Fine, thank you.
The only comments that I have and we can talk briefly, you see that there is an addition on our Zoom meeting this morning, Mr. Michael Troxel. Good morning, Michael, how are you? Michael, you're muted, sir. I want to take this opportunity to introduce Michael Troxel to the Board of County Commissioners as well as to staff and department heads. Mr. Troxel has accepted the position of Executive Director of Public Works and will be beginning, I believe, May 11. I had the opportunity last Friday to meet with Mr. Troxel and his wife, along with you, Mr. Chairman, and a couple of others of the management team and had a good conversation. And I just want to say, welcome aboard, Michael, and we're looking forward to you getting down here.
Well, thank you very much. I can't wait to get down here and another one can happen, I'll be down here.
Very good. So he's already got an email, I believe, set up, so if commissioners want to reach out, that would be fine, but just remember, he won't be here until the 11th. And so, Mr. Chairman, other than that, you know, we're dealing with the pandemic and we're still doing that and good things are happening at the EOC and once again, the chairman is out there as well every day, so I appreciate that. And Mr. Chairman, I have no other comments.
Thanks, all right, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Suggs.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Commissioner Harvey?
Could I ask Mr. Suggs to send Mr. Troxel's email to all of us so we know the exact, if it's not Mike or if it's, you know, whatever, if he could send that out to us, please?
Yes, I'll ask Ms. Parsons to get that out today. Mr. Suggs, would you re-mute, please? We're having feedback, me and you being in, with us being in the same room. No problem, no problem, pal. Next on the list is item number 11, Colonel Commando.
Good morning, Mr. Chair. Thank you very much and I have no report this morning.
Well, I thought that when you let lawyers talk, they always talk.
Try to be a man of brief words.
Thank you, thank you for attending with us this morning. We're going to go ahead and move into Commissioner comments and if I have to, we'll even move into the transportation workshop a little bit if we could because it's not a time certain meeting until we get to 10 o'clock. So next would be Commissioner comments. Commissioner Rawls, do you have any Commissioner comments or requests this morning?
Like, see, I'm going to update on the derelict non-vessel that's located up off of West River Road. We're discussing the possibility of getting them some relief in the form of a roll-off container.
Julianne, could you, could you answer that or is that?
Mr. Reynolds is going to take that for you.
Okay, sorry, Mr. Reynolds?
Yeah, Mr. Commando and I briefly spoke about ordinance that we would need to have in place and what due process needs to be taken on that first. I don't know if Mr. Commando has had a chance to find out any other information on that yet or not. I did try to research a little bit in our code in regards to the Florida statute that allows the county to have rules and regulations in place for floating structures outside of mooring fields and we have nothing in our ordinances that address that. So I don't, I don't know if Mr. Commando can give the board some direction on what we may be able to do today or what process we need to follow to make sure that due process for the owner of that structure is properly notified before we allow somebody to do something with it.
The owner's deceased.
I thought that FWC had mentioned that other family members were involved with it.
They didn't want to take ownership from what I'm being told.
Right.
As far as things.
It would help that if the other family members, I mean, they may have like inheritance type rights to it, even though it's an abandoned or derelict vessel. As Mr. Reynolds stated, the challenge is the state statute says that we can put an ordinance in place, we just don't have one right now. So I imagine that this may not be the last time we deal with one of these issues, especially having a major body of water as part of our county. I would suggest that we put together an ordinance, at least loosely, that gives us the ability to deal with these types of issues. As long as there's consensus from the board at this point, what I can do is I can draft a proposed ordinance for your review and we'll start it through the process. While that's happening, if anybody's in contact with any of those family members, if we can get them to reach out to Mr. Reynolds or myself, just so that we have the ability to communicate with them. We don't want to do anything without them kind of at least being unnoticed.
Rich, while, or Mr. Commando, while I'm certainly on Commissioner Rawls' side on this issue, I think that we need to make sure when we write this ordinance, we need to write it broad enough to where it's not just a one instant ordinance because this is going to happen again in the future and we may as well make it broad enough to give the commission the authority to put a dumpster out there or to hire somebody to remove one if it's in the, if it's in a dangerous location or what have you, and then maybe we can get it done quicker. If it's a dangerous vessel, maybe we can get it done quicker than what we've been able to do in the past by having to go through FWC. So if it's okay with the other commissioners, then I'm going to ask Mr. Commando if he would go ahead and draft us up an ordinance for our review at a future meeting. Is that okay with you, Commissioner Rawls?
Yes, I'll notify the owners today. The other question I have, you know, goes to, when are we going to start looking to open the county up? Getting a lot of questions from citizens wanting to know, we're going to get back to work and start having more normalcy to our lives.
Well, Commissioner, we need to keep in mind that the only thing we've shut down are the parks and the libraries. Everything else was shut down by the governor until we get, until we get the okay. We do have some criteria that has been issued for that, but before, before we can start into phase one, we've got to get through the gateway criteria and right now, we are not really at the gateway criteria for phase one. And then, once we reach that criteria, then we've got to wait two weeks to go into phase one. I keep looking any day now for the governor to come out with a little, a little, maybe, for lack of a better word, a little better direction on where to go, but it looks to me like it's probably going to be given to the county and the county needs to make sure that it's data-driven and not emotions-driven. And so, like I said before, and I'll say as many times anybody will let me, nobody wants to open up any more than I do, but we've got to do this correctly. One of the things that when it was my turn, and I'll go ahead and because you brought it up, Commissioner Rawls, one of the things that I was going to discuss on my turn was opening the parks. I have, I have talked to the head epidemiologists at the Health Department and they don't have any real, real big heartburn with us going ahead and opening the parks. We've been talking about it for a week or so now and so we're prepared. We've had signs made that should be done by now, if they're not, they should be done any day. And so, Julie, did I see you look at me through the camera like they're not done?
No, yes, sir, signs are done and the provisions that we had talked about are all ready.
Okay, so if the commission walks, we'll open them up at whatever time, but I think there needs to be an absolute direct discussion on project play. And the reason I'm saying that is, is because if we open project play up and it being a new playground with a splash pad, on the next warm day, the Army Reserve isn't going to have the ability to keep all the people off project play in that splash pad. So I don't know that we need to wait until phase two to open up project play. I'm just making that suggestion to the board. We have hand wash stations that we're ready to rent and put out at all the parks where people have the ability to wash their hands and stay safe. The signs are going to say, we are, this park is now open, help us keep it open by social distancing because if any one certain park becomes an area where they have birthdays outside of the CDC guidelines, then I think we need to close that park back up until we can keep it back, social distancing again. So with that being said, I'm going to just go through the commissioners one by one and ask them, do they have any particular comments on this issue, Commissioner Rawls?
I would stand in favor of doing anything we can to show the public that we're starting to move forward out of where we currently are psychologically, emotionally, financially. There's a lot of stress in the community.
There's a lot of stress in the community. I think any, any show of any, anything that's a positive step in the forward direction would be great. So I would absolutely applaud that.
Thank you, Commissioner Rawls. Commissioner Harvey?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I concur. The governor's executive order expires on 4/30. And unless he does something different, businesses will be starting to open back up, no doubt. I understand the gateway and things in that nature. But I do think the splash pad, we should probably slow the startup on that one down a little bit to give us some time to regulate that, not regulate it, but monitor the use of it in a proper format. But I do believe the other parks and stuff can open up. And let's get our businesses and our people back moving around. They're moving around anyway, and at least now that they, they could get out in the fresh air and get some sunshine. I think that would be a good thing.
Okay, Commissioner Goddard?
Yeah, I agree 100%. We need to get these parks open. We need to get, I'm not sure about the splash pad, but I guess we're just talking about shutting down the splash pad part of it until later?
No, sir. I would advise that we keep that whole park closed, the Project Play and the Splash Pad.
You don't think?
Well, I'll do whatever y'all want. I'll do whatever you want to do, Commissioner. There's nobody wants to open it more than I do, sir. I'm telling you. I've just, I've just given this a lot of thought. And I think if we, if we open a brand-new park up, people are going to be very interested in going and playing on that brand-new park more so than regular parks. And I'm very concerned about social distancing and somebody coming up with, maybe having a birthday party at the new park or whatever. So, but I promise you, I'm on board with whatever you guys want to do. I'll, I'll have that baby open Friday morning. With the chickens.
I've given this some thought and I did, you know, I did think about the Splash Pad. That's going to be a problem, and I can see that. And we know, we don't know how it's all going to operate at this point. But the rest of the playground, if my understanding is, we're going to have a fence around it. And I don't want to put more burden on the staff, but I think we could regulate how many goes into that new park. It's, it's, it's not going to be the ideal situation, but I think it's a safe situation. And I'd like to see that, that open up. The people are ready to get out and enjoy some of the amenities of Putnam County. You know me, I love getting people out and around and seeing all the great things we have here. So I'd like to, I'd like to make that a consideration. I understand not opening the water park, but I, I think we could regulate how many goes into the new park.
Okay, maybe, maybe I could suggest if we want to do that, which is fine with me, that we just ask Kevin to monitor it a little more and to see what he thinks if people are social distancing or whatever, and, and give, give, give us the option if we need to, to, to either reclose it until we can talk about it again. If people start going in there by the hundreds, yes, Ms. Young?
The other consideration for Project Play and the Splash Pad, Mr. Stevens has sent me a message and wants to just make sure you're aware that we don't have the staff, especially on the weekends, to monitor that. Weekends is where our parks see the majority of the use. But also, with respect to Project Play and the Splash Pad, prior to its opening, we are to do a ribbon cutting with rotary. And so, we would need to arrange that prior to doing anything with that particular playground.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Commissioner Rawls?
Why don't we consider this? Taking your recommendation and opening up some of the other parks. Each community has them, maybe do a soft opening and see how things go and leave the Project Play alone for long enough to get it completed. It's still going to have to be punched and accepted by the county. But to get things moving forward a little bit quicker, go ahead and get the other parks opened up on a limited basis.
Is that okay with the other commissioners, if you'd wave at me?
I'm all good at it.
Okay. Yes, Commissioner Pickens?
I, I understand where Commissioner Goddard is coming from, and that's going to be such a nice facility. You know, it helps showcase, you know, Putnam County Palaka. But I, I'd really like to hold off on opening that park up until we can have the ribbon cutting and make sure, you know, that this, this virus is, is, you know, not going to affect anybody there, because it would really be hard to try to social distance kids in, in that element, especially after they've been out of school, cooped up, and just really wanting to kind of just get out and go wild a little bit. So, so I'm in agreement of opening up the parks. I would like somebody from the county to get with Kevin and have Kevin reach out to the, since I'm the chairman of the Parks and Recreation Advisory Committee, to reach out to each member before we make that announcement and tell us, tell them what the county is thinking about doing and getting their input. You know, they, they sit on those boards for a reason, so I'd like to hear what their input is.
Okay, Commissioner Pickens, are you, are you suggesting at this point that, excuse me, are you suggesting at this point that we reach out to them before we open them up? Or to go ahead and open them up and let them know that we are opening up?
I would like their opinion, but I think we'd make the decision. I think the commission is ready to open them up, but I would like them to be aware of it and, and get their feedback, because that's, this is what we want to do, but we value your opinion. And then go ahead and open them up. I would assume that most of them will, will say fantastic to get those open with the, with the restrictions that you'll have with the signs in place for social distancing, the hand wash stations, and the things that we need to create a safe environment.
Okay, thank you. Is that going to be handled by Ms. Parsons or Ms. Young or?
Mr. Chairman, what we'll do, yeah, we'll draft up an email to all the, the members of the committee and get their opinion back.
Okay, well, this is something I wanted to talk to the, to everyone about today, and I'm glad we did. And y'all have given me, yes, Commissioner Harvey?
Mr. Chairman, I think in, in the fairness of process, maybe we should go for a Saturday, May 2 of opening the parks. That'll give our advisory board people time to get back to us. And we could be opening everything up Saturday morning. That way, we would know if the governor is going to extend his emergency order. But I think May 2, Saturday, would be an appropriate date.
Okay, that's certainly okay with me. The problem is if we open them on a Saturday, the existing current game plan is to have staff go out there at daylight on the day that we're going to open them and put these signs up that says, "Park is now open", with the social distancing guidelines and that sort of thing on there. So we either need, I think, and Ms. Young, you can probably help me out here, but I think that we either need to do it Friday or Monday, Commissioner Harvey, where we don't have to have people come in on their day off at daylight, hang these signs.
If, if the, if the decision of the commission is that you'd like to do it Saturday, we can have crews prepare the parks late Friday. I am trying to get Mr. Stevens on, because he is watching and has some comments, but I'm having a trouble getting him into the Zoom link. But, but we could accommodate trying to plan for staging of the parks on a Friday afternoon or late Friday, and then if the commission would like to open it on Saturday. But we would not have staff on Saturday to provide any sort of monitoring of the crowds or the amount of people in any park or playground.
Julie, what is Kevin's phone number? Is it 546-7158? Jacob said that's not him, so. Okay, so we haven't got him on here yet, or he's not in the waiting room either.
There he is, there he is. Hold on just a minute.
Okay, Kevin, did you have some more comments, Kevin, to make on, does it matter to you on when we open the park?
Yes, sir. Parks, I think, would be okay. I'm certainly okay with doing the parks. I'm trying to turn you off here with my, to mute you. I, I'm certainly okay with opening the parks. I think that's a great idea. Playground is a little bit more trouble, because all of your play features are located so close together, and you're not going to have children and/or parents that can control how their kids stay apart from each other. The opening up the parks themselves is simply like opening up the beach or any other large open space. They can control how far they stay away from each other with the social distancing and that sort of stuff. So I think that the, the parks would certainly be okay, but I just don't know about playgrounds right now.
Okay. Which, which, which are the areas of the playground? Because we're discussing not doing Project Play. Where, where else do we have a playground?
We have a playground at Francis U Sports Complex. We have the playground down in Georgetown. We have a playground out in Barden. We, you know, we have a couple of the smaller playgrounds, like the one we just put in Johnson. So we have a couple of playgrounds spread throughout the community, smaller playgrounds out in Boston, for example. So we keep, my suggestion is that we keep those closed, the actual playground with the play featured on it. But we open up the parks, such as the softball fields, the multipurpose fields, the soccer fields, all those things. We can open those up to public access, but just not the playground right now.
Okay, yes, Commissioner Pickens?
Kevin, say the, the little playground in Georgetown, has that been roped off or is it accessible? I don't, is there a closed sign on that particular park?
Yes, sir. We've tried to. I, I don't know that it's, that stayed that way, but we have tried to limit the access to that one as well.
Okay, Cheryl, entertain comments from commissioners on what do you, what do you think about Kevin's suggestion that we open all parks but keep playgrounds closed at this time?
I'm good with, I'm good with that. I think we need to, we need to start opening something. We don't need to make the wrong decision. But I, I think it's going to be hard to, say Georgetown, if you open it up, to keep them off that piece of equipment unless you have somebody there monitoring it.
Well, the, I think the best we're going to be able to do, Commissioner Pickens, is it would be to have another sign made, which will take several days, but have another sign made that says, "The playground portion of the park is closed." As far as keeping people off of them, unless you keep the whole park closed, that's not going to happen.
Right.
That's just the way it is. And so, we need to be realistic about where we're moving forward on this. So is, is that, I, I just need direction here. I mean, I don't mind making the decision, and you guys have given me the authority to make the decision. I just need to, I just need, this is one of those that I'd like for the commissioners to be in sync on as far as moving forward on, how do you want to get this reopening back started again?
Chairman, can you hear me?
Yes, Commissioner Goddard?
I, I'm for opening the parks. So that's where I'm standing. And I think if we're going to put a sign, I think the sign, "The parents distance the children on the playground and, and open the playgrounds." I, I, I think you're going to have them go on the, and all we can do is try to make sure the parents have enough common sense to separate the children and not let them be on top of each other. But I'd like to see the parks open. That's where I agree.
I concur.
Okay, thank you. Is that okay with you, Commissioner Pickens?
Yes, that's fine.
Commissioner Harvey?
I'm good with that, as long as there's a sign. Maybe we could get a sign that says, "Practice social distancing at the playground."
We actually have one of them coming, though, for every playground, every park that we're opening. I ordered them a couple of weeks ago, just to be prepared for when we did open them. And we're also going to put hand washing stations. And I'm going to assume that the hand washing stations are going to be close to these, there's going to be one very close to each one of these playground areas where someone can play on there and go wash their hands. So I'm, I'm assuming that's what we're going to do. Is that right, Kevin?
Yes, sir. We, we're going to order the hand washing stations. And they're going to be placed primarily at those parks and facilities that do not have running water. If the park or playground has a bathroom, a restroom facility, something like that, then it will be open so that they can use it to wash their hands. If it does not have any running water there, then we, that's where we're going to place the hand washing stations.
Okay, well, this commissioner would like a hand washing station by every playground. I don't care if there's a bathroom facility nearby or not, because we want to promote hand washing, especially at those areas, more so than having to run in the bathroom and do it. So that was my assumption of what we were going to do. I guess I wasn't, I didn't communicate well with you, Kevin. So that's what we want to make sure of, is that we have a portable hand washing station beside every playground when we open them. The next step, I guess, would be, Julie, Julie Anne, that's, that's not going to be a problem, is it?
The additional hand washing stations?
Okay. Commissioner Harvey's alluded to wanting to open on Saturday. Kevin, do you think there would be any problem with us opening Saturday?
No, sir, there shouldn't be. We can have all of the facilities ready to go. We can have all the signs put in position and, and ready to be opened up. Shouldn't be an issue with the hand washing stations being put in place by Thursday or Friday as well. I, I don't know what the, the company's delivery services are going to be and how effective they can be, but we will certainly work with them. But there shouldn't be an issue with Saturday.
Okay, all right. Well, Commissioner Harvey, I think, wanted to go for Saturday. That works for me. Does it work with Commissioner Pickens?
Yes, that sounds good.
Mr. Goddard?
Yes, that's good.
Commissioner Rawls?
Yes.
Okay, we're going to open everything, all the parks up on Saturday. So our sign should be, yep, go ahead.
I think it, it, it goes without saying that parental responsibility dictates that they're, they're going to decide how, how to best protect their children. So I'm, I'm sure you're going to have some families there that have face masks on, maybe gloves. But I think we should encourage people, you know, not only to, to do the social distancing, but also, you know, to do everything they, they need to do. Because at the end of the day, when this virus is all said and done, it's going to come down to personal accountability. You know, as a government, we can't protect people from stuff like this. They have to protect themselves. So I, I personally have no problem whatsoever with opening this up and encouraging people to do whatever they have to do to protect themselves and their families.
Thank you for your comments, Commissioner Rawls. The, we'll continue with commissioner comments. Commissioner Harvey?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just appreciate the hard work that you've been doing and our staff. I know it's been taking a lot of time. I know it's confusing. I know everybody wants to get back out as quick as possible. But I think we're doing the right things. And I know your leadership, and I know Mr. Suggs and Mary Garcia are doing the best we can with the directions that we're giving. So just wanted to say thank you and appreciate all your time and effort and enjoy serving with you on the board.
Thank you, Commissioner Harvey. Commissioner Goddard?
Yeah, I'm going to jump right in there with him also. Everyone's done a great job, but I really want to commend you, Chairman. You have done a phenomenal job. We, I, I'm sure all of us, we really appreciate what you've been doing. I know you've been spending countless hours out there, and I do thank you. I want to jump ahead. Now, the governor has put out here that he wants to try to do this three-phase opening. The, but what I've seen, and, and maybe I'm getting conflicting reports, showing that we have about 13 still recovering at the hospital. And then I've been told we have none recovering at the hospital. But I do know we can't do anything until our numbers, you know, stop climbing. They have to stable out before we can even start stepping into phase one, if I'm correct.
That is correct, Commissioner Goddard. And I have some information, but I just can't speak to it just yet. And the Health Department hasn't released me to speak on it yet as part of the policy team briefing. And so, as soon as I can speak on it, and Ms. Young has been waiting on the text by the second and trying to let me know, can I yet? And it's hard for me, because you know me, I bust at the seams when I have a secret. But it's not going to be a secret, but for just a few more minutes, it may be after transportation or whatever, but I'm going to be able to speak to some of this. And so, we'll have this discussion again in a little while. But as far as the parks, we're over it and we're going.
Okay, all right. I guess I'll, I'll close mine with that, you know, just everyone, stay as safe as you can. The biggest thing I see out there is, is still got groups gathering. You know, most people are doing the social distancing. You know, most people are doing the social distancing, but I, I still see large groups gathering. I, I, and I don't know how we can address that. Anyway, I hope everyone stays safe.
I'm with you, Commissioner Goddard. I don't, uh, know if we can, how you would address somebody being socially irresponsible, but, um, I understand your, your position. Commissioner Pickens?
Yeah, Chairman Turner, um, just wanna thank you for your hard work and all the extra hours putting in. Uh, also Administrator Suggs and, uh, all the staff and the staff of the EOC, uh, all our first responders and, um, firefighters that are, that are putting the extra hours to help keep us safe. And, uh, Terry, I appreciate, uh, our Administrator Suggs, appreciate the daily updates, whether it comes from you or Juliana, uh, it's very informative. So, uh, so just appreciate everybody's hard work. And this shall pass, uh, it seems like eternity, uh, but we'll soon be over this and we'll be a better, better county for it. Um, in closing, I wanna congratulate and welcome, uh, Michael to the team. Uh, I was honored to, uh, be able to meet him last, uh, Friday, I believe it was. He was in District One, Michael, which is God's country. And, uh, uh, we talked a few minutes and, uh, so looking forward to working with you. So that's all I have.
Mr. Chairman, you would know that Commissioner Pickens would grab first, wouldn't you?
I'm sorry, I haven't.
Show them where all the equipment was located.
I, I didn't mention anything about the equipment. And also, Chairman Turner, I wanna thank, uh, uh, golly, Lori Parker for identifying that all y'all could see with my head. I'm a little challenged with my technology in the office here. Brought me an empty paper box. So I've got my iPad propped up so you can see, pardon me, which I don't know if that's a good thing or not, but I appreciate, uh, them recognizing that and helping me out.
Okay, good, thank you, Commissioner Pickens. We have an issue that we're trying to work through at the moment. There was a, a lady that wanted to talk, was, did she wanna talk on the public comment for the regular meeting or the public comment for the hearing? For this meeting we're in, okay? And she tried to contact us and was unable to, is that what it is? You're gonna have to speak louder, Jacob. Okay, we, uh, we're gonna back up because of the unprecedented way that we've been trying to have virtual meetings. We're gonna back up a step and go back into, now that the commissioners have had their comment, and back up into the public comment just a little bit. Rich, there's no problem with that, is there?
Yes, sir. Actually, I think that's the right thing to do is to reopen public comment if we know somebody wanted to make a comment.
Okay, well, that's what I'm gonna do. Thank you for the backup. I think Jacob's trying to.
I also have one after we have the phone call. I received another email.
Okay, good. We'll, uh, read it into comment and I think Jacob's trying to get her hooked up right now. So anyhow, Laura, you wanna go ahead and, and read the one you have in the public comment? Or does she, or is it another one that wants to call in?
No, sir, it's one just wants me to read it.
Okay, well, you wanna go ahead and read it into the record?
Yes, sir, it's from Jenny Oakwood. She would like to know if we can schedule a virtual meeting in May for Animal Services. And she also asked for an update on the progress in regards to the new shelter. I did let her know that we had discussed that, um, but she does want to know if we can schedule a virtual meeting in May.
Okay, who is the Chairman of Animal Services Committee? John Traxler?
Yes.
Uh, would you reach out to the Chairman Traxler and just let, make sure that he's aware that we have these Zoom capabilities and that, uh, and, uh, see if he would, uh, consider having that meeting?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, if I may?
Yes, Commissioner Rawls?
I've sent out an email to all the commissioners, uh, Mr. Suggs, and also forwarded to Sarah, um, for the record. Uh, there's two different emails that have the floor plan, um, in total and then exploded into three parts. So what I was hoping is maybe we could have a discussion about that at the workshop this, after this meeting.
Okay, I personally, I'd like to have a little time to actually review it. And this, the workshop is gonna take off right after this meeting. It's not gonna be this afternoon like normal. And so, uh, anyhow, with the, uh, Commissioner comments, um, done at this time, except for mine, and I think I've made mine along as we've went throughout the meeting. And so I really don't have anything, uh, additional to, to, uh, move at this time. And we have a, it's nine fifty-eight. We have a time certain ten o'clock meeting. So, uh, we're just going to, uh, recess the meeting for, uh, three minutes to give us time to get past ten o'clock and we'll move back from, uh, we'll move back into the, uh, the ten o'clock public hearing. So meeting is adjourned, or a meeting is recessed for three minutes. Yes, I'm gonna reconvene the meeting at this time. And, uh, evidently, uh, Mr. Commando, the lady that was trying to call in, all she would say to Jacob was she was gonna sue because the comments on Facebook didn't work for her. And she didn't wanna talk to us on the phone. She just kept telling him she's gonna sue us. So just let you know that we tried, Jacob tried to help her and let her speak at the meeting. She didn't want to speak at the meeting. So she wanted to just let us know that we were gonna be sued because our Facebook comments were turned off.
Well, and, and I think everyone knows, we have a number of different avenues where people can participate in public comment, where, um, we're looking at having invitations sent if you're an applicant, like part of the planning and zoning type issues or the quasi judicial issues. And, uh, I'm, I'm not sure how submitting an email is any different than the Facebook comment. We have that in writing. People can drop off letters to us, people can mail letters to us. We have a phone number where we can call them. So, um, I, I think we're doing everything we possibly can under the circumstances.
Okay, good deal. Uh, thank you for that. At this time, we're going to, uh, move into the, um, into the workshop or the public here, no, excuse me, the public hearing at this time. And, um, with that, we're going to, uh, move into case number, um, R twenty dash oh oh one, uh, Public Zoning Map Amendment from R one to R three, uh, Genuson Horizon Home Corporation. With that, I'm gonna ask Mike Brown to take over. Mr. Brown?
Mr. Chairman, good morning. Yes, um, R twenty dash oh oh one is a requested rezoning. The applicant is Genesis, Genesis Horizon Home Corporation, Agent Sophia Brinson. Uh, the request is to amend the zoning map for a parcel from R one, Residential one, to R three. Uh, the property is located at seven oh one, seven oh eight Elmwood Avenue in Palatka. Uh, the parcel is presently, um, designated urban service on the future land use map. And it presently has a one thousand nine hundred and twenty-four square foot residential structure, which was built in nineteen fifty-seven. This parcel with a smaller parcel just adjacent to it, to the west, uh, is a, is surrounded, is really an enclave, uh, surrounded by the city of Palatka prop, uh, property on all four sides. Um, and I will go into this a little later, but, um, just, um, directly to the west is, uh, City R three, which is a multifamily, uh, zoning district. And west across Elmwood is, um, City C two, commercial. There are no wetlands or, or hazard, flood hazard areas on this just parcel. In your packets, there is the, I've included the aerial future land use and zoning maps, both for the county and the city. Um, and as I indicated earlier, the, um, future land use is urban service. Our urban service future land use allows for a maximum of twelve units per acre based on our, uh, point score criteria provided in the comprehensive plan. The R three zoning district is allowed and applicable in the, uh, urban service, uh, future land use. Um, the existing zoning is R one, which is a single family, uh, residential unit, our residential, uh, zoning district, which prohibits mobile homes. Uh, the request, the reason for the request is the applicant desires to convert the existing single family structure to a duplex. The R one zoning district will not allow that. The lowest, uh, or our, the only dis, there are two districts that will, uh, zoning districts that would allow that, um, use. And the least intrusive is the R three zoning district, which is a multi, multifamily, which, uh, will not allow, uh, will only allow a maximum density of six units per acre. The site being an enclave does has that, does have access to city water and sewer. As I indicated, the R three zoning district is allowed in the future land use of urban service. Um, the county's comprehensive plan has maximum impervious surface, uh, percentages and maximum floor area percentages for the urban service, uh, future land use. With that, along with our required setbacks, limits the size of any structure that can be built on this. Um, and again, the request is just convert the existing residential structure to a duplex, not to increase the size. Both Elmwood and this parcel is also on the corner of Melon and Elmwood are paved local roads. Staff does not believe that converting a single family residence to a duplex would increase graphic impacts significantly to adversely impact those roads. And again, um, the parcels to the, uh, immediately to the west are zoned R three and for the city zoning, which again is a city multifamily residential district. Um, and across the street is commercial too. Staff did, um, run this through, um, and coordinate with the city of Palatka Planning Department. They had no concerns with the rezoning. So in conclusion, um, staff finds that the proposed rezoning to see through to R three for this parcel is consistent with the, um, sorry, that's our, our, uh, energy savings, uh, dimmer. Staff finds that the, uh, rezoning this parcel to R three is consistent with the comprehensive plan. It's consistent with the local, uh, locational requirements for the, uh, R three zoning district is compatible with the surrounding uses. At the planning commission, one member recused themselves, um, and there was a three-three vote. Uh, therefore, the planning commission is not sending a, is basically sending a recommendation against the proposed zoning. However, um, staff is still standing by its recommendation and staff's recommendation is to approve the request for the amendment to the zoning map from R three, R one, two, R three for the subject parcel. Do you have any questions for staff at this time?
Okay, we don't have any, doesn't sound like we have any. Yes, Commissioner Harvey?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I do have a couple of questions. Um, in reading this, um, application, Mr. Brown, um, it said on page ninety-eight of my, um, my agenda that it's not going to increase the square footage and I think you alluded to that. Is that correct?
That, that is what we've been told. They're, they haven't, they have not submitted any plans for increasing that structure. They have submitted some plans and are in the process of, of doing some maintenance improvements, such as a new roof. But, um, we have not seen any plans and that's, um, what, um, the applicant has indicated, um, in the past. So that's the best I can tell you.
Well, the reason I,
Go ahead.
The reason, the reason, Mr. Brown, I asked that question was simply this, that Mr. Salmon said he would not approve it if that there's a square footage increase period. So I guess I would like to know the plans before we do it, because if we, if we do it and then they're looking to increase square footage, the recommendation from your office would be changing. And maybe we've already done it prior to that happening. Uh, that's one of my questions. Do you understand that?
I understand what, what you're saying, um, and I, I understand what, what John said, um, Mr. Salmon said. I believe, um, that we have the, um, as I indicated, the stand, the required setbacks, the height restrictions, uh, the limits on floor area ratio and impervious surface, really limit the ability to increase, um, the size of that structure, um, much at all on that size parcel. Um, and I believe would cover, um, I feel comfortable, um, from my position as director, that those restrictions limit any adverse impact from any minor or, my term, limited, um, size increases that may happen on that park. What happened with that structure.
Thank you, Mr. Brown. Another question for you. Uh, some of the members of the board on page ninety-nine of my packet referred to this as spot zoning. And actually, the, the motion was made, uh, not to approve the case due to what they felt like was spot zoning. And maybe their relief should be coming from the city of Palatka where they annex in and start creating the proper boundaries that we've been talking to them about for quite some time now. So my, I guess my question here is this. If the commission, and I feel this way, I can't speak for any of the commissioners, would like the city of Palatka to, to clean up their boundaries, maybe we start with this and say, we're not interested and if you want relief, you're gonna have to annex into the city and start, and then the city would clean up their boundary. The city's pretty much told you they don't have a problem with it. So I, I just don't know if I'm comfortable on a three-three vote where they refer to it as spot zoning. And I, I just wanna say that publicly.
Thank you, Mr. Brown.
Any other, before we move into public comment, is there anybody else? Yes, Sir, Commissioner Goddard?
Well, and, and, and not just the spot zoning and the fact that I, it does, I mean, it's like a little spot that's outside of the way the city's boundaries are, but also there was concern about it being a homeless shelter. So I don't know if we really need to, I think we need to contact the city, I believe, before we go much further.
That issue of a homeless shelter came up. My take is that was clearly speculation because a homeless shelter would not be allowed within the R three zoning district in the, for the county. Um, so that uses, you know, I heard it come up at the planning commission. We tried to address it. But, um, this, the city has R three directly west of this. So that's why I, staff does not believe it's spot zoning, because their, their R three intensity is a lot, is even higher than what the county's R three intensity would allow. Now, so that's why staff does not believe it's spot zoning.
Uh, Mr. Brown?
Yes.
If, if we were to approve this today and then later on, it could be accepted into the city if they decide to so do so?
Yes, oh, yes. Really, we talked to the, I'm just telling you, when we first met with the applicant, we suggested that, that they maybe approach the city and I can't respond to why, um, or what discussions they may or may not have had with the city. But we, staff feels it's, it would be appropriate in the city, but it's not at this point. And they've asked for, for the rezoning, so we reviewed it against our rules.
Okay, well, I understand. For years, even when I was with the property appraiser's office, we were trying to get these things cleaned up because it, it is chaotic all over the place and we, we do need to get it straightened up. Okay, that, that's all I have.
Commissioner Rawls, did you have a comment?
Yeah, so when I looked at their website, um, they're a nonprofit that specializes, uh, and I'm, I'm, I'm reading from there, it says, they have ten years' experience managing housing and supportive services for vulnerable, vulnerable. Uh, and I'm, I'm, I'm reading from there as it says, ever ten years experience managing housing and supportive services for vulnerable populations. Was there any discussion, Mr. Brown, with the, the location in proximity to the school?
Um, there, the only. The only discussion that came up at the planning commission was related to additional traffic from over. For a duplex versus a, um. Single family residence and, and having the, um. The road basic, that one side road basically act, accessing the, the school. That was the only discussion. Uh, staff does not believe that the traffic increase would be significant enough to, um. Be an adverse impact on Melon Drive and, and the school access.
I guess, yeah, my, my concern is that, um, this could be transient type housing and I'm, I'm wondering if that's the best location for it. Given it's proximity to the high school.
Okay. Thank you for your comments. Is there anybody else wants to make a comment before we move into public comment?
Yeah, I do, Mr. Chairman. Mike, I did have the concern about the spot zoning, um, especially looking at the, the individual from the planning commission that, that made that. Observation has been on the committee for a long time. Uh, I do respect your opinion also. I have another question, Mike, is I see on page ninety-four where it's outlined in blue. What happens to the piece of property that's behind that? Is that not one piece of property?
No, it's two parcels. It's owned by the same entity and there's a small, single family residence on there. And they are making improvements to that, but they, they, um, they could live with, uh, the existing zoning on it. That is going to stay as a s- existing single family residence. But it would, yeah, the appropriate would be for the city to annex both of those parcels. But they own, but the applicant for this owns that parcel also.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Um, Chairman Turner, um, that's all the questions I have. I would like them, like to make a comment after we vote on this. Or however we move it forward, uh, about the enclaves and the, the situation with the city and the county, because I've had somebody reach out to me about those. So I'd like to make a comment after we vote.
Uh, not a problem. At this time, uh, commissioners, we'll move into public comment for, uh, case number twenty dash oh oh one. We've had four people reach out to us. It looks like it. Dennis is, is actually in the room waiting. What'd you say? Sophia Rashor is first, okay? I don't see her on my list. Okay. All right. So Sophia Rashor, I'm going to admit Ms. Rashor. Takes a minute to get them in the room. Ms. Rashor, can you hear me yet? I think she's joined, is connecting to audio. Ms. Rashor, could you hear me yet? Yeah, I haven't got you yet, um. Not yet, Ms. Rashor. I can see you trying to talk, but we haven't got you yet.
Yes, I can hear you. Can you hear me?
Yes, ma'am, I can now. Uh, good morning and, uh, please, uh, you, uh, start your comments and try to limit them to three minutes, please.
Okay. Thank you. I just heard, um, a couple.
Not yet, Ms. Rashor. I can see you trying to talk, but we haven't got you yet. Well, it's bleeding back. Who's, you got it? Okay. Go ahead, Ms. Rashor. I'm sorry.
Yes, I can hear you. Can you hear me?
Yes, ma'am, I can now. Well, somebody's bleeding still. Please, uh, you, uh, start your comments and try to limit them to three minutes, please.
Okay. Thank you. I just heard, um, a couple.
Not yet, Ms. Rashor. I can see you trying to talk, but we haven't got you yet. It's bleeding back. You got it? Okay. Go ahead, Ms. Rashor. I'm sorry.
Yes, I can hear you. Can you hear me?
Yes, ma'am, I can now. Well, somebody's bleeding still. Please, uh, you, uh, start your comments and try to limit them to three minutes, please.
Okay.
Not yet, Ms. Rashor. I can see you trying to talk, but we haven't got you yet. It's bleeding back. You got it? Okay, I think the problem was here is, is somebody was watching it on YouTube and trying to do this at the same time. So. Seems I have lost her at the moment.
Okay, can you all hear me?
Yes, ma'am, we can hear you now.
Okay, great. Okay, yes, I just wanted to, um, for the record, I am, um, Sophia Prince and Rashor and. I know I heard a couple of concerns regarding what the structure was actually going to be used for. Um, the, the structure, we are trying to rezonate to a R three, but it will not be structurally changed. To increase capacity. All that is being done is basically a firewall would go in between the existing building. We have an architect. On board that will be put because the home is currently, uh, nineteen hundred and fifty-seven square feet. So we. How it's currently set up from the prior owners, they were making some changes. If it always was going through, there was a firewall. To give us two, two units. We're not going to change the outside structure of the unit. Therefore, the sizing. Of the actual unit will not, you know, be changing. The bedroom size will also be the same. So there, there wouldn't be any character change nor would that, you know, I foresee any, uh, major traffic coming from this duplex. Again, it would only be one unit and how, from my understanding and some was thinking that we were going to be opening up a homeless shelter. However, we do do that in Jacksonville, Florida. We, we house disabled individuals, but that has nothing to do with this project here that's happening in Putnam County. The reason for this was basically this was, is my hometown and I seen that particular property that we purchased and we wanted to. Uh, you know, reduce the renovations and update into, you know, that I thought would be welcoming to the community. Because that, if you all have seen that home, it is a very, you know, um, eyesore right now, but we wanted to just make renovations to that home, nothing major. As far as running that, operating a business nor in any type of senior homeless. You know, what all the rumors that were being said, that is not what will be operating out of this duplex. It will basically serve as residential. Homes or, you know, to. I'm sorry, I got a question that's on my video. I'm sorry. Okay, there's my video. But, um, yeah, there are basically just be two, um, two units and again, it will be no character changes. So the rumors and. The viewing of the websites of our business that operates here in Jacksonville, Florida, has nothing to do with Palacka, Putnam County's, um. Putnam County's, uh, business or anything of that nature. There will be no business, only residential. And again, there will be no bedroom size changes, no bathroom size changes. So again, we just want to clear up and make sure everyone understands that no business will be operated here. Nor will there be any character changes that will be happening at this, uh, location. So again, if anyone could just take business out of it and this really just would be something beautiful for, you know, we're trying to make it renovations for, uh, that particular. Parcel. So again, no business, no extra traffic, just basically as if we were renovating a home, but it was large enough. To do a firewall to put in two duplexes. So two units will be available versus just one single family, whether it's a single family or a duplex. It will still, you know, have the same amount of people. So there is no significant changes happening. Again, we went down this path once we spoke with the planning. The, the planning commissioner and they were on board with this. So this is the reason we took the, this route. And, you know, we had recommendations up to this point as well as contacted the city of Jacks and no one had any disagreements. So again. This is why we went this route. I mean, later in the future, if, because I know the county and jurisdictional line of city and count, uh, city and county. Is an issue here, but again, right now that's not really our issue. But again, if that's something we may need to look into in the future, you know, for you all's sake, you know, to clear up these boundaries or whatever's going on there. You know, that may be something we can entertain, but right now, again, there's just going to be a, see, basically a single family. And it's going to have a firewall and there's no character changes, not a whole lot of traffic. It would just be two units at this location.
Thank you, Ms. Rashor.
You're welcome. Thank you all.
Okay. So is there any, uh, questions of Ms. Rashor at this time? Uh, hearing none of Jacob, who's your next one? Do you want to let in?
Mr. Chairman, I was muted. I do have a question. I'm sorry.
Okay. Commissioner Rawls?
Ms. Rashor, do you have a target, uh, market for this, um, building? Or y'all just going to rehab it and then make the decision later?
Correct. We're just currently just rehabbing it. Um, there, we don't even have, you know, anything in place as far as a tenant or anything lined up. It's no specific population that we're targeting. It would just be as if we were renting out a house. So again, and we, we will screen our tenants, um, for that particular location, just as we do with any of our other locations.
Okay.
Okay, Jacob, who do you have next? Okay, do you have Roy Strickland? Okay, would you admit him? Mr. Strickland?
Yes, sir.
Okay, uh, this is Commissioner Turner. If you, uh, want to go ahead with your comments, we're listening now.
I just got turned on. I don't know what's happening. Uh, did you open the case or read or do anything?
Yes, sir. We have opened the case and we're, uh, discussing it right now and we're in public comment section of it. And, uh, so we let you, uh, into the, uh, to the meeting for your public comment.
I had no idea what was said before this. Um. I was waiting on a meeting. Um, it doesn't help you, does it? I'm just trying to bring the, the property into, uh, what the county wants, um, features, I mean, I guess that's my only real comment.
Okay. Um, thank you, Mr. Strickland. Does anybody have any questions of Mr. Strickland at this time?
I, I have one. Um, is he, is he in favor of this? It sounds like he might be, but is he in favor opposed to it?
Were you able to?
In favor of it.
Okay.
Uh, I believe that the park would be better off if the county is happy with the current zoning. Um, with the full zoning and it will allow me to replace a few of the units on that side if I need to in the future. So, yes, I'm okay with it.
Are we certain, Jacob, that, uh, Mr. Strickland is talking about the same zoning case that we are? Mr. Strickland, you're talking about the, uh, the, the zoning change that would allow a duplex instead of a single family residence?
Duplex.
Yeah, I think we're all two different zoning cases here, guys. I think he's calling in about the mobile home park case.
I think you're correct.
Okay, well, Miss.
My name is S U T L F O.
Okay, this is Mr. Sh- Sutliffe. You let the wrong guy in. Mr. Sutliffe, if, if you would just hang out, that's our next case. So we'll just, if you don't mind, we'll just let you hang out till then and then we'll let you speak when we get into the next case.
Yes, sir.
Okay. I've got, uh. We got Richard Venice in there in the meeting room. Would you let him in? I think, uh, I'm going to ask Rich a question while you're letting him in. Rich, shouldn't we be letting everybody that wants to be in the case join the meeting, uh, at the first of the case? Where they can hear what's actually being said about that case?
Sir, we can, we can do it that way. It just helps if anybody who joins the meeting follows kind of the same. Kind of procedure that we're all doing where they keep their microphones muted so that they can just listen. I think it'll just help your meeting run.
Right, yeah, and I can mute them too if I need to. So, uh, Mr. Venice, uh, could you hear me now?
I can.
Okay, um, you're wanting to talk about the, uh, the zoning issue to, uh, from an R one to an R two to allow a, a, uh. A duplex instead of a single family dwelling. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay, if, uh, please proceed with your public comment, sir.
Okay, um, we, uh, I would ask to talk about this property. We, uh, the size of the property is, where our intentions are to, uh, the owner's intentions are to rent the property. At the size of the property, the current market rents would be out of, uh, too high for the neighborhood. The average rents in, in that neighborhood average between seven hundred and a thousand dollars. It's a four-bedroom, two thousand square foot house. We, it would be out of the pricing. So, uh, we would like to rezone it to a two-family. It fits the, uh, future use of the property. According to the, uh, future use plan for Putnam County. And we think it would be more in line with the market rents, uh, for that area. And that's, uh, what I have to say, sir.
Okay, um, does anybody have any questions of Mr. Venice?
I have one.
Okay, Commissioner Rawls?
So this will be two completely separate living units with separate kitchens and all that, correct? It won't just be a matter of partitioning off. Two bedrooms and two bedrooms? No, it'll be two, uh, we submitted a plan, a drawing, I believe, and it would be two kitchens, two ba-, um. It's two separate units. It's a, it's a two-family structure in one building, also called a duplex. Yep.
Okay, thank you, um. Jacob, do we have, uh, a, Mr. Passmore on the line? Okay. What case is that for? Uh, I'm going to admit them. We have another, uh, on the next case, Jacob, if we have any in the waiting room, let's be sure and. Let everybody in for the same case at the same time where they, we don't miss one by accident. Uh, we'll let everybody just listen. So, uh, okay, Mr. Venice, I'm going to, uh, mute you, sir, uh, at this time. Uh, if you, if you, uh, need to speak again, if you would wave your hand or unmute yourself, either one, that would, that would help us out. So at this time, we have, uh, we have no one else on the line or in the waiting room for this case, or we do? Mr. Pinkston, I believe you're here for this case. Is that correct? The duplex to the, uh, single family residence?
Yes, sir, I am.
Okay, if you would, uh, continue with your public comment?
Okay, thank you. Um, I had the opportunity of pretty much being the broker, um, during this, uh, real estate transaction. So I got pretty familiar with, uh, Ms. Taylor. She was the previous owner and, uh, Mrs. Preston as well. Got the opportunity to, um. I was able to, uh, uh, take a look at the property and I just kind of, I just wanted to state that what they're trying to do here, once they make it a duplex, uh, I might add, I'm a Realtor as well. Here in Florida, they're just pretty much trying to change the structure of it. Um, nothing is going to be added onto the external, uh, of the property as well. Um, and like I said, I also think it'd be actually great for the neighborhood as far as comparable. So kind of just wanted to throw that out to you guys.
Okay, uh, thank you, Mr. Pinkston. I'm going to mute you now if you, uh, want to. Okay, and we have someone else on the line, uh, Roy Strickland? I think, um, I think Mr. Strickland is still, uh. We have another person that wants to comment that, uh, the IT is trying to contact him right now. Okay. You have him on the line? Okay, he's fixing to join the meeting here shortly. We're going to give him some time. We don't want to miss any public comment, anyone wanting to speak at a public hearing. Mr. Strickland, are you with us?
Can you hear me?
Yes, sir. Uh, welcome to our meet, welcome to our meeting, uh. This is Chairman Turner with the planning, with the Putnam County Board of County Commissioners. And we're in our hearing on the du, the zoning case that's asking to allow a duplex where there's a single-family dwelling at the present time. Is that the case you were wanting to discuss?
Yes, sir.
Okay, please proceed.
Thank you. My name's Roy Strickland. I live at 618 Elmwood Avenue. I bought this house about seven years ago and this neighborhood was kind of rough. We had a lot of street traffic. It's been cleaned up. People are walking their dogs or walking their kids or riding bikes. We live by three schools here. And nobody in the neighborhood wants another duplex. We already have six of them in the neighborhood. And having to deal with, you know, people walking around the neighborhood all the time, it's finally getting better. There's no reason to add another duplex on this neighborhood and make our values go down. This company says, you know, single-family, but if you look on their website, you can read it right off their website, Genusirize and policies are designed to screen in rather than screen out applicants. This includes provisions of housing to persons with the greatest barriers of housing, such as having no or very limited income, poor rental history, past evictions, poor or no credit, and/or criminal histories. That property butts up to the high school. It's across the road from Mellon School and a block away from the new science and arts school. And nobody in the neighborhood wants another duplex around here. And I just want to thank the board for letting me express my concern over this. And I hope y'all have a good meeting and thank y'all for all the COVID updates.
Okay, thank you, Roy. Is there any questions of Mr. Strickland at this time? Okay, seeing none, we're going to move into. Well, I'm gonna let him in. Well, thank you for letting me know, Jacob. And whenever you do see someone up there, if you let me know, I'm gonna start letting anybody in that we know is wanting either case. So, so no one misses out on her public comment. My apologies again, Commissioners. We're trying to let somebody else in the call. I think it went in.
Morning.
Yes, sir. Welcome. What is your name, sir? It's Putnam County School District Teacher's iPhone. What is your name, sir? I lost you.
Jer.
Jeremy Passmore, you're, you're cutting in and out on me, Mr. Passmore.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, Rich.
From other meetings that I've been in, if people are trying to use the video function and they're not on Wi-Fi, it does not seem to work as well if you're using your phone's data plan. It helps if those people just call in on a call-in number without the video.
Okay, I think he turned it off, so we're gonna give him another second or another few seconds to try and get back on again. I just think that's a prudent thing to do, to let anyone talk that possibly wants to, especially with this being a, a public hearing and not just a board meeting.
Yes, sir.
Okay, I'll let him in. You let him in?
How you doing? How you doing?
Yeah, good, Mr. Passmore. Sorry for the inconvenience. Please, if you'd like to go ahead and talk about the, the case, we're ready for your public comment now, sir.
Yes, I'm a resident of that area. I actually at 910 Elmwood Avenue. And I know the individuals that actually are, are planning on making the movement. They're really good people and I, and I agree with what they're, they're trying to do.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Passmore. We appreciate your comments. If you want to hold on, I'm going to continue on with the meeting at that point. I think that's everybody that has requested to make public comment at this time. So Commissioners, I will open it up for discussion and/or a motion.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Mr. Commissioner Harvey?
Thank you, sir, and I appreciate the, I know it's been a little dicey there getting into it again, but I appreciate your patience. What I heard from Mr. Brown was his closing comments, and I just want to make sure I'm correct, that this would be more appropriate for the city of Palaca to deal with. Again, I'm, I'm a very big advocate that the city of Palaca needs to clean up their boundaries. And I think this is one that they could do if we don't, if we don't allow it to happen. So, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that we deny this based on the fact that it appears to be spot zoning. And that's my motion, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, Commissioner Harvey, I appreciate that, but I've been informed by by Rich Commando that the ordinance has to be written into the motion. Is that correct, Rich?
It just, it needs to be read at least by title before you vote on the motion.
Before I vote, okay. So we have a motion. Can I get a second?
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. As discussion, I'm going to read this ordinance number into the the motion is to deny an ordinance of the Putnam County, of the county of Putnam, state of Florida, amending the official zoning map for Putnam County incorporated into Article 2 of the Putnam County Land Development Code, ordinance 15-18, providing for severability and an effective date, case number R20-001. So I'd had, I needed to write, read that in. Yes, Commissioner Harvey?
Mr. Chairman, I think you said 2015 and it's actually 2005-8.
Thank, thank you for catching that, sir. I think you're correct. So please make that change to 2005-18. Excuse me a minute, Commissioners, yes. Is that, no, I'm not muted. I'll mute. Please excuse me for just a second. Sorry for that. I had to get a COVID update. We have a motion on the floor and I think that we've read. Rich, you think we're good?
Yes, sir, I do.
Okay, so if there's no further discussion.
I have a, I have a comment, I have a question. I have one more question for staff if I can answer this. Mike, the parking for a duplex versus this single-family residence, what, what will be addressed there? Does that go to, or does that go to public works?
Now, the parking will all be on-site within, outside of setbacks like any other single-family residential unit would be. There would be no difference. You'd have a few, probably one or two additional vehicles than you would normally see, but the parking would still be required to be on-site like any other residential unit.
Okay, thank you. That's all we got.
Okay, is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all in fa, all in favors of the motion to deny, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, ayes have it, motion carries. So the motion was to deny. Okay, our, our next case is case number R20-002.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Before we go in that, can I make just a comment?
Sure.
About what we were just talking about, about the enclaves and we, and the uncertainty of the boundary lines from the city to the county. And we've had a couple of meetings when we were meeting with the city commissioners and the mayor from Palaca discussing this, but nothing has moved forward. I had a citizen reach out to me about situations, just like we were talking about, and the uncertainty of who's providing services to them, whether the city or the county. And they had concerns and I mentioned to them to reach out to each of the commissioners. Have y'all been, you know, contacted by an individual from Palaca that's, you know, concerned about these enclaves?
Yes, Commissioner, this has been an issue within the city and the county for several years now. At one of the city-county joint meetings, if you remember, with Mr. Folksom, back when Mr. Folksom was here at the city by the city manager, they were trying to take it as far as the county paying them taxes and additional taxes for the, for the lots that were in the city limits that were in the county. Of course, that didn't happen, but so this, I think this has been an issue for quite some time and it seems to me like that someone has to agree to be annexed into the city. They can't just go annex everybody they want to in. So I'm not quite sure, but this has been an issue for some years. So would any other Commissioners like to make a comment on that issue? Commissioner Harvey?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and, and I agree. We had those joint meetings with the city of Palaca. And the only ones that really can clean this up, Commissioner Pickens, as you referred to, the person that contacted you, contacted me also, you know, is really the city of Palaca. And they need to be about cleaning up their boundaries. The county of Putnam has a boundary. It's already set in place. And Commissioner Turner, I think you're exactly right. I don't think they can force it, but I think it's time for them to look at it because it, you know, going in and out of, out of the city of Palaca, I think I've heard nine times from State Road 20 to the river, it's ridiculous. And I think that was my motivating factor today, was getting this stuff fixed by the city of Palaca is what they need to do. We have no other problems with any other municipality other than the city of Palaca and their boundaries. And it's time that they get this done. Whatever means they need to get it done by, I'm all for it. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Commissioner Harvey. Are you finished with your comments, Commissioner Pickens?
Yeah, I, I, I am. I think, I appreciate Commissioner Harvey's comments. And I, I kind of felt that maybe it was the city of Palaca that needs to maybe take the first step in initiating, you know, some type of conversations about what they might annex. Are there Commissioners in agreement of that? I mean, or do you have an opinion on that?
I think that's pretty much how it's gone every time we've discussed it since I've been here for sure, is that the, the Palaca needs to kind of take the role in what they can and cannot do and if they want to move in their direction, in that direction. I believe that, that they want to. I think it's just a matter of can they or not. So like I said, I think it's up to them to step in that direction. Are there any other Commissioners would like to comment on this before we move on? Mr. Rawls?
Yeah, and I, I agree with Commissioner Harvey's comments. I think the city does need to take the lead. I think it's time that we all sit down and discuss this. It's, you know, we, great opportunity right now for us to have this conversation. But this also goes to what we're working on with revising our comp plan and we really should be looking at this in that way as well, that you're, the enclaves create a lot of issues for the, the candidate city, but for the citizens that live there, it really creates heartache for them. So the sooner the better. I, I personally would be in favor of sitting down with the city to discuss this and start trying to move this forward.
Well, I don't disagree with that, Commissioner Rawls, but I've been here three years and during that time, we sat down with them twice and it's not gotten anywhere. So I don't mind trying again by any means whatsoever, but I want them to come to the table with at least agree, agreeing that they want to move it somewhere. The people, the people that I talked to who own one of these lots in the city that's in the county and not in the city, when you start talking about this issue, they're gonna reach down at you because they don't want to be in the city or they'd already be in the city. They don't want to pay the additional taxes. They don't want to go on the city water. They don't want to go on the city sewer. So if they did, the, the city has always been very amenable to letting them in because it increases their base on their, on their services. So, you know, until they, until they can come up with a solution that makes people get as much out of it as what they're putting in it, you're gonna have an issue. Both the last two times we talked about it, it turned into quite an issue, a controversial issue, mostly for the people who live in the county but within the, the limits of the city. So with that in mind, I'm going to move on to the next case, if that's agreeable to the Commissioners. Case number R20-002. And it's brought to us by Mr. Sutliffe, and I think Mr. Sutliffe is still in the meeting. I'm gonna let Mr. Sutliffe, I see you're still with us, I'm gonna let Mike Brown give us a description of what's going on and then, then we'll take your, your comment after that, sir.
Sounds good.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Mike?
R20-002, again, is a request for a zoning map amendment on 7.03 acres from residential 2 to residential mobile hub. The applicant is Robert Sutliffe. The property is located at 7017 Silver Lake Drive. Parcel is designated urban reserve on the future land use map. This parcel is a split-zone parcel. The entire total parcel is 12, 12.5 acres in size with 5.14 acres presently zoned RMH. And the area is subject to this request, 7.03 acres zoned R2. The parcel, parcel has been used, the entire 12 acre, 12 and a half acres have been used, has been used as a mobile home park since the 1980s. The parcel does have frontage on Silver Lake Drive with two permitted driveways providing access. The portion of the, of this property that is zoned R2 that contains a mobile home park, that it, those uses, that use is legally non-conforming pursuant to the land development code. That means that although maintenance to, work to maintain those units can be done, legally non-conforming pursuant to our code, for the mobile home park does not allow for the replacement of mobile homes for that section. In your packet, there are the, the aerial, the land use and the zoning map. Again, the urban reserve, future land use map category does allow residential densities up to a maximum of four dwelling units per acre, depending on, on the point score criteria provided in the comp plan. The RMH, requested RMH zoning is allowed within the urban reserve future land use. The existing zoning on, on the seven acres in question is R2 and it does not, it's a single-family residential zoning district, does not allow for the a mobile, a residential mobile home park. And thus, the reason for requesting the change to RMH zoning would be to make the existing use compliant with the land development code in the zoning district. As I indicated, the requested rezoning is allowed within the urban reserve future land use. The property, entire property is serviced by a DEP permitted potable water system and a permitted community septic system. And as I indicated earlier, the entire parcel had been used, utilized as a mobile home park since the 1980s. The surrounding uses are primarily single-family. However, there are two smaller mobile home parks, one abutting to property to the southwest. One abutting the property to the southwest, uh, with RMH zoning and another one approximately a quarter mile, uh, east on Silver Lake Drive. Uh, Silver Lake Drive is a paved, uh, collector that presently operates at acceptable level of service. Because the use would not change and it's been in place, uh, there would not be any significant increase in traffic from the rezoning of bringing the, uh, entire parcel consistent with, uh, the land development code. Uh, in conclusion, staff finds that the proposed rezoning to RMH is consistent with the comprehensive plan. Um, is consistent with the locational requirements of the RMH zoning district as, as set forth in the land development code. Is compatible with the surrounding uses. At its March eleventh, uh, public hearing, uh, planning commission voted four to one recommending approval of the requested rezoning. Staff recommends approval of the request to amend the zoning map amendment from R two to residential mobile home RMH for the subject property. Is there any questions of staff?
Mister Chairman?
Yes.
Um, I need to let you know, and I've got about an hour and a half of internet left. The lineman just knocked on the door and said they're gonna be taking the poles down and taking me out of service here in about an hour and a half. Um, so Jacob, I might have to go to another location in order to continue this, uh, meeting. Um, just want to give you an FYI on that. According to this case, though, I wanna, I got a couple of comments. Uh, Mister Brown, on page one eleven, it, it, the, um, description and background, it said it's considered a non-conforming use. Um, will this, by us approving this, would it allow for the conforming use and will it allow for us, for, it appears in the statement that allows for the applicant to clean up some of those mobile homes that are in there. I guess currently he's not able to, to do that. Am, am I reading that correctly?
In, um, for the seven acres in question, um, that, those units on those, on that part, on that section of the project um, are deemed legally non-conforming, which means they can continue, um, there, and you're allowed to do basic maintenance on them, but you could not replace them. Could not take one out and replace it with a new one. Once it's gone, you cannot replace it under our code. Um, so I don't, does that answer your question, Commissioner?
Yes, it does, but, so this would allow a conforming use then where the applicant could remove some of the older mobile homes, bring in new. And then upgrade the park at the same time because it clearly needs to be upgraded. There's no doubt about that.
Yeah, um, yes, it would allow that. It would make the entire parcel, uh, there, or that use conforming on the entire parcel.
Thank you. Thank you, Mister Chairman. That's all the comments I have.
Okay, Commissioner Harvey, thank you. Uh, are there any other questions or comments on this case before I open it for public comment?
I have a question.
Commissioner Rawls?
Mister Brown, is, is this a slippery slope where somebody does something that's not in conformance and then they come in and beg permission later? Um, how, how did, how did this get to there is my question?
I mean, I'm not, like I, like I, our research shows that that use for the entire site was, um, in place in nineteen eighty. It was in the, during the eighties, it was developed as a mobile home park. Um, I don't know through the pro- through the time how that split zoning arrived. I, I, I looked into it, but I can't find out the reason for it. I will tell you, um, back in the nineties, there was an attempt to rezone that to entirely RMH. Um, our records do not indicate why that didn't ultimately happen. Um, and we, just dealing with a, um, longstanding area that has a, a parcel that has, was under split zoning. I don't know how it ended up this way, but, um, I understand your rid- your issue with the slippery slope, but I, I believe in this case, the use had been there for such a long time and even prior to the adoption of our comprehensive plan that, um, I don't think it was somebody doing something illegal or try, and coming back trying to ask for forgiveness rather than permission. That's the best I've got for you.
So it's strictly housekeeping?
Okay, thank you, Commissioner Rawls. Um, Mister, uh, under a public comment, I think the app- the applicant, Mister, uh, Sutcliffe is with us today. Mister Sutcliffe?
Yes, I'm here. Can you hear me?
Yes, sir. Uh, please proceed.
All right, um, I purchased the park in two thousand and three. Um, it was dealer's own then, obviously from before, because Mister Brown, I believe you said. I'm just trying to make it conforming. I'm trying to bring in a possible partner so we can upgrade a lot of the units and one of his concerns was that he could not replace the R two side mobiles. And we agreed, so we're going through this process so that we can yank some of the mobiles out there and make it a nicer place, or that's our intent. I believe they have asked me to do this a couple of times over the last, basically seventeen years. They want me to bring in conformity and I'm trying to do what they had asked me to do, so. Uh, I believe that's. It, I mean.
Okay, Mister S- Sutcliffe, I appreciate that and, uh, I'm gonna place you back on mute. Uh, is there any, is there any Commissioner comments or questions of Mister Sutcliffe? Um, I'd like to make a comment. Um, I think that we have, that we would be doing the people living in this park an injustice if we didn't let the, these people go and these applicants go and change out the mobile homes that they have in the park for, from old beat up mobile homes to newer, nicer models where they can upgrade their park. Otherwise, to make the park profitable, you're gonna make them have to just, just keep fixing up these trashy mobile homes. I, I just think that's doing the people an injustice that, that have to live there. So I think, in my opinion, I think we should pass this, uh, especially with the recommendation coming from the planning commission that we passed this, uh, and let the, and, uh, let the applicant have the ability to change out these mobile homes. Uh, now the chair will open the floor for any further discussion or a motion.
I have a question, then I'll make a motion.
Okay, Commissioner Rawls?
Mister Sut- Sutcliffe, um, is it your intention to bring in new mobile homes or will they be used mobile homes, um, replacing the old ones that are there now?
Uh, our current intention is to replace the brand new mobile homes on the old sites. Now, it won't be all of them. It'll just be the older demoted ones.
Okay.
But there's some nicer units in there that were placed in there around ninety eight, ninety nine, two thousand. We're gonna leave those intact. But like the number eighteen, which is a nineteen seventy one piece of junk that we keep fixing up because we had no other choice, that would be yanked out. And a nice brand new one we'll put in its place.
Okay, so Mister Chairman, would you like to make a motion?
Yes, sir.
I'm making motion that we approve application R dash twenty dash zero zero two for rezoning from R two to RMH.
Okay, would you please add to the motion, uh, as it was consistent with the goals, objectives and policies of the comprehensive plan?
As it is consistent with the goals and objections of the comp plan.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Second by Commissioner Harvey, is there any further discussions? All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed?
I have a public comment that I need to read into the record.
Oh.
And we also need to read it by title.
Okay, where's the title on this one at?
The many ordinance, oh five eighteen.
Is that what you need, Rich?
Just like you read the title last time, it's on page one oh six of the electronic packet.
Okay, I'm, I'm gonna read that into, uh, into, it says, "An ordinance of the county of Putnam, state of Florida, amending the official zoning map for Putnam County incorporated into Article two of the Putnam County Land Development Code, ordinance tw- two oh five eighteen, providing for separability and an effective date case number R nineteen dash zero zero two." No, it's R twenty dash zero zero two. So the case number is wrong on the ord- ordinance that was in the packet. But I've got it covered now. So I'm going to, uh, I'm going to, uh, even though we've already, uh, voted on the motion, I'm going to back up to public comment. And then I'm going to ask the Commissioners at the end if that public comment would have changed their vote in any way. If so, we will back it all the way up again. So is that correct, Rich? Is that good enough for you? Mister Commando?
Yes, Mister Chair.
Okay, thank you. All right, so what we're gonna do is I'm, we had about a five or six page handwritten letter that was sent in to Ms. Parsons and we're gonna ask her to read that into the record at this time. Ms. Parsons?
Okay, this was sent to the Board of County Commissioners. Um, dear sirs, my name is Isabel Rea. I'm requesting to hear me before you rezoning mobile home park or even allowing Mister Robert Sutcliffe to operate his business. On January first, twenty twenty, I was renting a trailer in this mobile home park. I signed a one-year lease. When I moved in, I noticed they only finished remodeling half of my trailer and never came back and just ignored me when I said that it's not inhabitable. The floor in the back room was open, sunlight was shining through and other damages. I have pictures and videos to prove it. I also started getting sick and noticed toxic fumes like acid and black mold oozing out. I ended up in the clinic and had several tests done. This man rented out a completely condemned and contaminated trailer to me. It was knowingly rented out to me. The neighbors told me about the history of my mobile home. I also found out this landlord charged me last month's rent, which is illegal in Florida. He and his maintenance guy basically told me I was lying about rain coming through the roof. One of my neighbors broke through his floor and a hundred other issues. I am in touch with code enforcement and I was told that I would have to move out of the same, out the same day when they come by to condemn the trailer. I have no family here. I will end up homeless. Mister Robert Sutcliffe has over twelve properties in his name. My source is Legal Aid, oceanfront property in St. Augustine and over two acres on the Hudson River. This man allegedly cannot buy a new tin roof for his tenant or move into an, or move me into another trailer. I was told if you don't like it here, you can move out. This man is a slumlord of the worst kind. I am hereby asking the Board of County Commissioners of Putnam County to deny Mister Robert Sutcliffe to acquire another mobile home park. I am asking you to supply us the tenants that live in condemned trailers with emergency housing. We are elderly or family with young children. We pay rent. We are not asking for freebies. The trailers are not leveled out, resulting in floors breaking. One of my neighbors fell through his floor. My trailer is not properly connected to the sewer system. I'm in contact with code enforcement, but at this moment, they cannot come out due to the virus. I did take pictures and videos of everything as proof. I'm asking you to get in contact with code enforcement to come out there and go inside. Nothing works right now. It's a hazard and people are getting sick. Lot number thirty five. Lot number thirty five has a history too. The previous tenants were evicted, but they were just transferred to a different trailer. They are the reason the sheriff department was there all the time. When the family left lot number thirty five, it was completely trashed. They also left an open bucket of acid behind. The children that play there told me about it. Children should not get exposed to this. I'm asking the Commissioners to send in undercover officials posing as renters interested in trailer number thirty five because of, because of its proximity to the lake and take samples. This landlord is knowingly renting out meth labs. The workers know about this. They come in with their paint brush and paint over and tape over mold and drug residue. They see what's inside the trailers when individuals break into them at night and leave stuff behind. This has been going on for years and trailer number thirty five was recently worked on. I assume ready for the next victim to move in. I'm also asking the Board of Commissioners to ask Mister Sutcliffe to state his address loud and clear. The East Palaca address on St. John's River shows up as a foreclosure. I'm trying to file a lawsuit against him and I need a valid address to have the sheriff serve him the papers. There are several addresses listed for him. My name is Isabel Rea and I certify that the information I gave you is true. This is the worst case of slumlord and psychopath I have ever encountered. His property should be seized. Sincerely Isabel Rea, April eighteenth, twenty twenty. And she also noted, lo- lot number eighteen is the mobile home that was rented to me January first, twenty twenty through December thirtieth, twenty twenty.
Okay, uh, in light of this, uh, statement that was read into the record, does that make any of the Commissioners change their mind or vote from the earlier, uh, motion and second and, uh, vote that was taken?
Mister Chairman?
Yes, Mister Harvey?
It does not change my vote. I have some concerns, but I believe by allowing this, we're gonna allow the applicant to clean up this park. And then we do have codes enforcement that can go in, but it does not change my vote.
Okay, well, hearing that it doesn't change anyone's vote, we're going to move on. Uh, and that is the, uh, end of the public hearings. The, uh, motion to change the zoning to an R, uh, RMH was, uh, was passed and, uh, so that's the end of our hearings for today and we've already been through court of court appointments. Um.
Mister Chairman?
Yes.
I, I think it's fair to respond to Ms. Reyes's concerns and let her know that this Commissioner, although I sympathize with her position, um, and if what she alleges is true, uh, it is absolutely incredulous. Um, there's nothing we can do and has no relevance on the zoning, uh, case itself. So I just wanted to say that, uh, for the record. Um, and I agree with Mister Harvey. That's why we have code enforcement. That's why we have a sheriff's department.
And I totally agree with you, Commissioner Rawls, and that's the reason I didn't take it any further because it is gonna be an active codes case if it's not already. And, uh, I've already asked Mike Brown about a week ago to look into this somewhat and so it is a, going to be a codes case and if codes decides they need the sheriff in there with them, then it'll be up to them to get the sheriff involved. So, um, I don't, try not to make a habit on like active and, of active investigation in the code. So, but thank you for your comments, sir.
Thank you, sir.
So, uh, and with that in mind, I think we're ready to move into the transportation workshop and, uh, does everybody want a five-minute break before we move in? I see Commissioner Pickens bobbing his head.
We're saying yes.
Bobbing her head.
Okay, we're gonna take a five-minute recess, uh, Jacob.